Is Craig gonna make it or?
I don't remember.
No, told me he was gonna be gone.
Well, he wanted to travel.
Right.
He had heard from him.
Alright.
There you go.
Okay. Uh, it is six oh two.
Wow, that's pretty close, man.
Friday, March, uh, I'm sorry, Tuesday, March tenth. Gotta get that right. Let the call the meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we consider, take a moment, or think about those who have gone before us. Thank you. Okay. Local call please. Oh, I have the orders, I ordered wrong.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Marby.
Here.
Trustee Lewis and Trustee Pine are not present at the moment. And Attorney Gilchrist.
Great. Okay, a few announcements. Uh, first off, St. Patrick's Day Parade is coming up this Saturday. The parade kicks off at one P M. with lots of festivities throughout the village after, possibly also before. Um, the village election is coming next week. It is on Wednesday, March eighteenth, uh, here at Village Hall in the courtroom, uh, and it runs from noon to nine P M. There are three, uh, seats available. Um, let's see, Vanessa Lewis and Craig Pine, uh, as well as Deb Alter are running. The three seats available are Vanessa Lewis, Craig Pine, and Ben Patton. Uh, so that is noon to nine. Uh, please stop by, uh, and vote. We have a letter from the Husick Lions Club. It's a request to use, uh, Wood Park, the bandstand, and the village streets on Saturday, May sixteenth, for a road race, um, from six A M. until one P M.
Motion.
Second.
I pretty much summarized the letter, so that works. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posted? Approved?
Just have to coordinate that before the, May with the police department and with Neil and the highway cars.
Yeah.
Setting up cones and stuff like the road.
We'll touch base and see if we all agree on what the same ru- route is, like last time, the same route, yeah. Alright, um. I have a le- let me skip, um, head one. I have a letter from, uh, the Relay for Life team. Uh, they would like to, uh, use the Wood Park and normal race route for Saturday, May ninth, which is the week before the Lions Club run. Um, the race starts at, at nine A M. They didn't have a time here, but I figured eight A M. to noon would probably be good, and this would be the seventh annual lace-up for Cure Run Walk.
Are they always that close normally?
No.
No, ones usually.
They're, they're usually in April.
April, yeah, she said that.
But I think they're having conflicts with the baseball softball.
They were, she told me that today, that it was the reason. And she wanted to know when the other race was, so we confirmed that it was the sixteenth, so we grabbed that.
It's tough to compete two races in a short period of time.
Yeah, can't do that.
In the past, this race has brought a little over three hundred participants, both runners and walkers. And they want to use the same start at the Wood Memorial Park, onto Harder Lane, left on the twenty-two, slight right on the one-way street, left on Church, left on John, right on Main Street. Is that the normal route?
Yep.
Or we'll make it the normal route? Alright. Uh, and this is from Gretchen Jankunish.
Second.
Okay. Ben and Bobby, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posted? Carries. I know it's not ideal to have those back-to-back, but it's alright, still good. Alright, um.
You wanna run, you're gonna run.
There you go. And you can run one week and see how you do the next week. We have two races on May ninth and May sixteenth that we just approved. Um, so checking with Neil, I know. You guys will have a little pow-wow.
In sixty?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, ninth and sixteenth, both Saturdays.
Did he mention anything about the, the route? Are we staying with?
Yes, the normal route.
Questions about the route?
I'll let you guys figure out the route.
Mine covers Montel Street, the Relay is.
You got, you, whatever he's.
Okay.
Whatever he.
That's, that's our motto for the year, whatever he says. Yeah. Okay, um. I received a letter from Janet Spitz, who's here in the audience. Hi Janet. I'm bored, you guys have seen this. I forwarded on to you so you could read it. It talked about parking issues. It talked about, I think, garbage issues and some issues with, um, uh, some people, um, being too lazy to go use the restrooms and, uh, using John Street instead, um, which is pretty awful and gross. Chief, this is a copy for you, so you have it. Did you want to summarize anything or speak to that since you're here?
Well, I just wanted to, um, say that I'm relatively new to Husick Falls, as you know, um, having just opened Husick Falls, or sort of a year ago. And so my impressions, um, are more of a newcomer. I don't have a lot of history here. But, um, it does seem that, um, there is a parking issue. Um, sometimes the lot is quite full, especially on Saturday. Um, and so people who would, you know, come, sort of can't find a place to park. Um, and also if you're going, in terms of signage, if you're going southbound on Route twenty-two, right on John Street, there's no indication of where you can park. It doesn't say parking, turn right, turn left, it just doesn't say anything. So, I think it would be really great if there were a big P, you know.
Some signage.
Yeah.
You know, some signage with some arrows, um, both on John Street and then on Church Street, right across from the lot, or, um, if you decide to develop the lot at the bottom of Church Street, you know, however you decide to do that, um, I think signage would be great. Um, I think that at some point, it would really be great to increase the number of spaces, whether that has to do with putting more gravel down at the bottom of the Church Street lot. Uh, I don't know if there is a lot there, or people just sort of park there in the dirt, but they do, or, uh, you know, again, I'm new, I don't really know the history here, but I'm not really sure what the solutions are to overflow parking.
Yeah, and, um, you're, you're not the first person to discuss the parking situation on John Street and, 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 in, in the larger parking lot by the bank. Um, we've been talking about, and I know Andy, we talked through a few, uh, products that have been, that we've had on the radar. One of them is looking at all the parking rules, because, um, some of them are old outdated, and some of them are not cleared, and some of them are not signed properly. So I think that's a project that we have coming up, uh, in the next coming months to address that, and I, I like your idea of, for people driving through on twenty-two either way, having signage to point them to the, to the, especially the main lot.
And I also wondered if it might be appropriate to make the two-hour John Street one hour, if it's really supposed to be short-term, but then, of course, it would have to be enforced, because now a lot of those spaces are simply locked in for three, four days in a row.
Yeah, we've gotten, uh, a lot of, of discussion on that, and we're gonna have to revisit that, but any change in what the, the, what it is, if we change from two hour to one hour, that has to go through local law, um, approach, but that is very much on our radar.
I, I've seen tickets on, uh, John Street just recently.
Good.
We just, we have a car removed today that.
Great.
Will be on.
It's been there for six days.
Yeah.
But the guy said he was moving it at night. They were just parking it there in the daytime, with a for-sale sign on it.
Well, there's two-hour parking though.
Yeah, cool.
He moved it, and we explained to him that.
Great.
He gets itself across.
Great.
But also, Jay, there are park- there are parking signs for the, uh, Church Street lot, although one is behind a tree, so you can't really see it. And the other one's on the other side, heading south, across the Cum- right next to Cumbe's.
You're talking about across from near the, where the library is, there's a parking sign there?
What's that?
The one by the library?
No, I'm talking about the lot next to, uh, Tri- Tri-State Credit Union.
Oh, okay.
That one. And also the, the one by the library, the, uh, sign was hit by a car, and it never went back up again. And the one thick coming south down twenty-two towards the village, that one there is behind a tree also, so it's hard to visualize that one as well. So either the signs have to be moved to, away from the trees, and the trees have to be trimmed, or, or something to that effect.
Neil, are those trees that are blocking some of the parking signs our responsibility or owner responsibility?
I will definitely check with the state.
That's what I was gonna ask, 'cause twenty-two.
State responsibility.
It could be state.
Okay.
It's, it's just like that two-hour parking thing on twenty-two on John Street, you know. In order to change that, I think you'll probably have to report to state.
Okay.
I don't think it should be changed to one-hour parking though, because some people go in the restaurants.
If you go to your chills, you're not gonna have time to, you, an hour might not be enough, it's like when you eat and.
Especially if you wanna have a conversation.
Once, once this new restaurant opens up, I met with him, and we talked about parking, so.
Mm-hmm.
Probably is gonna be time to address it, because I'm assuming, um, they're gonna be parking wherever.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
One of the lots we discussed up by the library was a lot of those tenants in the apartments in the, actually next door, which already has parking, are using that. And, um, I think we recommended there'd be at least six two-hour parking signs in that. And that's something Emily and I are.
Gotta get the other on, yeah.
Yep.
Is there a way that we can clean, um, from Mark does inspection apartments? And, and maybe Andy can look into it, that we speak to or send in some type of program letter to the, um, the owners of the apartments, of the building itself, to, to address, one, parking, two, that people that are moving in here must be reminded that they need to change the registration from Vermont to New York. I, it's an issue. I drove around the sign thinking, look at these cars, they're Vermont plates. But it's gonna be hard for us to go knock on the door and say, hey, you know, why are you parked here? Because they can say, well, I'm visiting. But if they, if they have to, um, register a vehicle, per se, with the landlord,
Mm-hmm.
it gives us something that we can go back to the landlord and say, hey, one-twenty-one, whatever street, there's two apartments here. What are the cars that, that belong here? So that if it is a Vermont plate, we then can tell them, you need to change it.
Okay.
What is a lot about? One month after moving?
It's a month, but it, it, again, I've talked to people that said, oh, I'm just visiting my girlfriend, or I'm just visiting, you know, my friend. But, you know, they're there all the time, so how do I, you go to court, and it's gonna be an argument. So if we can address it that way, we have something to fall back on through the landlord, that says, these are the two cars that are registered here to, to, to be here, with the plate numbers, so he can say, let's say, you can leave them on.
Yeah, and the other issue in the Church Street lot was people parking their trailers there as well, that.
Which we got that thing in care of too.
And, and I've addressed that with him, and he now put a plate on it that is not matched to the, to the trailer, so I've addressed it again. He, he's not getting it. So if Andy can, I don't know if Andy has researched that, whether we can ask landlords to do that?
Yeah, the primary way to address that clearly is required off-street parking, the regulations within your municipal lots, and regulate the on-street parking, and that's the more direct way.
Regulate as far as enforcing the two-hour.
Yeah. Yep.
I, I would agree, because it's hard to, you know, the landlord's saying things. We can, we can try and get them to work with us, but there's nothing that specifically.
Mark can't even get them to notify him to do the biennial inspections and the new tenant inspections, along registered vehicles.
I found that some of the, uh, cars parked in the library lot, the library, the ones that cross from the library are tenants from surrounding areas that actually have parking, but they decided it's a better parking lot, so they park there instead.
But, and that comes back to the, uh, and I'm sure it's a pain, because you guys almost have to mark it
I was thinking.
at one time, and then go back, you know, two hours later and see if those same vehicles are still there. But I think if we start getting it out there, I mean, I can start, you know, I can send a mail to, to tenants that we're gonna start doing it, and maybe trying to get some cooperation that way, but.
Well, Kate, you also mark it as no overnight parking, too?
Well, in the case of this lot, it, it should be two-hour parking, because if we have businesses opening up like the Bistro, what is it, forty-two, we want him to have parking so people can park there and not say, get frustrated and walk away and say, I can't find a place to park in this, this town.
So as the mayor said, this is something that the board has looked at, appropriate regulation of the municipal lots. And we started working on that. We've got some ideas out there, and also taking a look at the village streets and determining what the appropriate parking should be, and do more of a comprehensive local law to deal with on-street parking. And then the provisions dealing with required off-street parking for multifamily, that should be looked at and enforced.
Absolutely.
One of the things I'll, I'll construct tonight is, I'll kick it around, is some word that I put out on Facebook by the police department, registering the vehicles properly and parking on the streets. It's not something we can hang our hat on, but at least I can get it out there.
Right.
If, if you read it and it meets what you guys wanna do, follow up on it or create something else through, in the village, on Facebook, maybe Mark put it on the town Facebook too, because people might come into the town, just to get it out there as much as we can.
Alright.
I think a lot, too, on the twenty-two areas that, that state put up during the twenty-two reconstruction, a lot of those signs have fallen down. There's quite a few stubs around on the sidewalks that should be replaced, that had no parking signs, and now they don't have, they're gone. I think John Street maybe only have one or two two-hour parking signs, so that should be looked at as well.
But yes, you're right, there are stubs along there, where once upon a time.
Niels, is that another thing that the state would do and not us?
Yeah, yeah, I, I can notify the sign group from state.
Alright, can you make a list of, um, some of the places you think were missing signs and email it to Kevin and myself? Anybody else want that emailed to?
Yeah.
Bobby too? Anybody else who wants it?
Me.
And, uh, email it to me and I'll forward it to everybody. And then we'll, uh, make sure that list is, uh, matching what, what, the, some of the signs you guys are bringing up, and we'll add that list from the state and add it to our to-do for signs, parking.
Mike Danforth told me that he has the key with all the, uh, the signs on it, and also all the ownership, who owns the trees, who owns the signs, who's responsible for all the things that were left from, behind from the construction.
Oh, Mike isn't it?
I think he said he might afford it to you, but he said if we wanted it, he would get it to us.
Uh, we want it.
We want it.
All in favor? Okay. Alright, so, alright, great. Thank you, Janet, thank you for the letter.
Um, you're welcome. So the other issue that I would ask respectfully for the board to consider is that of sanitation, so, which has two parts. One is trash cans, which there are none, and the other is signage about restrooms, because I think that a lot of people honestly don't know where, where restrooms are available, and as summer comes and people hang, you know, where are they supposed to go? What are they supposed to do? Should we get a couple porta-potties put on someplace? Or else we at least need signs that say, public restrooms, you know, yada, yada.
Alright, we're looking, we're looking into that as well.
Possible.
Yep, we'll look into it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Alright, a couple of quick announcements, uh, on some of the projects that have been going on. Uh, in terms of the phone system and network, the wiring has been done. Uh, you'll see some ports here and in various other places, so that everything is now wired to one corner in the larger room, which I'll show you behind my desk. Um, and we are gonna be basically operating on two separate networks, one network for our computers with our current internet system that we have. The second network will be another service through Spectrum, and that will strictly run our voice-over-I P VoIP system, which we're gonna be talking about later in the meeting. So wiring is done. I have to order a switch, and Doug Pilot, who is our, um, um, our computer guy, uh, not during hours, but after hours, when he's free, um, uh, we're gonna sit and, and wire everything in and, and get things back to the way. It's normally, ideally in the office, no one's gonna notice anything, just, it'll be, it'll be wired differently, and that'll be good.
Mayor, when, when do we think the phones are gonna be?
We're making the decision on that tonight.
Okay.
Um, I have to order the, uh, network switch, and once we tell Jackie what the decision is tonight, then it's about getting, uh, all the equipment here and go.
I think we're done on that side.
Yep, you're wired on that side, we're wired on this side. So once we make the decision tonight and tell Jackie and put the order in, uh, seven phones on this side, three phones on that side, and whoever does the setup comes and does the setup. Um, but the end result is that the office will have a fax number, the court will have a separate fax number, you guys will have a separate fax number.
And if you speak to Jackie tonight or tomorrow, 'cause I'm gonna call her, I gotta report that our phone out here is, is, um, it, um, it's got a problem, it doesn't have a problem going to nine-one-one, it's, it's hard to hear, so I gotta ask her.
Once we get the new numbers up, then we'll have to sit and go through and get rid of all of the old lines. We're gonna maintain a few of them, like, we're gonna maintain a backup number for, for here, a backup for the court, maybe a backup for you, we'll maintain that one, but all the other ones will be gone. Um, and it's, when we go over the, the, the phone stuff later, it's a.
The phones, are they getting replaced as well?
Yes, yes.
So it's, so you'll be getting all new phones for the police department as well?
Yep, and I'll go over all that stuff, uh, when we get to that part.
Okay.
Uh, we did get the internet service installed at the wastewater treatment plants, and I think, uh, that they have either gotten the system up and running, or they're about to. I think they were just waiting to, um, contact the, uh, J Squared subcontractors, so that now everything will be set in terms of the, um, pump station now communicating properly with the wastewater treatment plants. The way we did that was, um, uh, using a data internet service instead of, um, Spectrum or Verizon, because the service was awful and wouldn't do what we needed it to do. Um, I received an update from, uh, D E C, uh, on my monthly call leading up to our meeting. Uh, they've removed, um, geez, by now they've probably done just about everything, uh, down there. They removed, uh, a whole bunch of, of the source material, everything they could find. They did a lot of tests going further under the soil and found that they didn't need to go any further. Um, what they discovered was it wasn't actually, the culvert though underneath wasn't a culvert in the fact that there was a hard bottom and two sides, it was just two sides. Uh, and no hard bottom, and that was the old chute that used to exist before they redid the, uh, Woods Brook chute in the fifties. Um, so they have gotten, uh, a lot of their stuff out of there, they've gotten most things covered up. Neil, is there anything else that you've seen down there? It's open back up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's open. They're pulling their excavator out today, so.
Yep. And we've been urging them to make sure it was done before St. Patty's Day, 'cause.
So will they, they're gonna have to come back and, and, and anyway, and pave and everything else? Are they done digging altogether?
The digging is pretty much done now, that's, yeah. Uh, Louise's actually, I can tell, they're starting their cleanup prep order. Um, I just got a email for paving sometime in May, first part of May, so.
So all that roadwork that was done will.
Cause they came back early, right? I mean, this is earlier than anticipated because of the weather, is that why?
Well, because of the weather, and they got another big job starting April first.
Cause then the last time we talked, it wasn't gonna be until like April they were coming back.
Yeah, and they're working on the new chase line up in North Husick by the silver plant, so.
Okay. Alright, um, the Jackson Street Playground, Fourth Ward, um, we closed it off because we got, I complained about a few issues, safety issues, and, um, Neil checked it out that next day, and there were some legit safety issues, so we have that, um, locked off. The time is closed until we get things fixed. Neil, have we gotten anything fixed up there yet? Not with everything else going on. So, we get it, it's a priority, it's a, it's a, the we- good weather is here, but, um, we can, good conscience, uh, have it open with a couple safety issues, so we're gonna get that taken care of soon. Hopefully it will be open soon.
And on that note, I received a couple calls from young children about it being closed. They were not upset. They were asking a lot of questions, and I encouraged them to come to a board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody's here, right?
That's cool that they're asking.
I did tell them that, that if they would like to come to a board meeting, they could ask those questions too, so some kids showed up.
Okay, alright.
I thought it was good that they, they called me.
Yeah, definitely.
And I do need to put a message out on Facebook, I haven't done that about that. Neil, let's talk tomorrow, get anything out on Facebook, maybe we can estimate when we're gonna open up some of the stuff. Um, the last one is the big news story everywhere, the, uh, COVID-nineteen coronavirus disease. Um, the reason I'm bringing it up is, is to kinda stress what we've been hearing from the, um, health experts in the state, uh, and in the federal government, is, um, make sure to wash your hands, um, don't cough on, on, on people, cover up, all that, all that stuff that they've been preaching is really, really important, because it's gonna slow the spread of this. Um, I've had a lot of students in school talk, uh, ask about it and have concerns about it. Um, it is nice to see that, one of the things that the Surgeon General put out was that they took data from all of the fatalities across the world thus far, and they, they discovered that the average age for a fatality was eighty years old. Uh, this is something that is very much, uh, targeting people who are older, who have weaker immune systems, or who have respiratory issues. Um, the reason I'm bringing this up is because we do have our parade Saturday. Um, we have, you know, we are leaning on county and state officials, but we are still very much a go for that parade. Um, but, uh, at the same time, we do want to urge caution, uh, for anyone who's in that sort of target, um, population, who could be at risk for coming down with this and having some serious issues, so please use discretion, use soap, sanitizer, and so on.
I did talk to the county health department today, and, uh, there are no reported cases of virus in Rensselaer County. There's one case in Bennetton County, I think it just was announced, he's from Reedsboro, Vermont.
Okay.
It actually was in Bennetton, but he's in the Bennetton Hospital. Mary Fran from Rensselaer County Health gave me some information about, uh, I think it came from the C D C anyway. I also asked for some sanitizer, have they had any of that? They're on a back order of three weeks to get.
I was just gonna ask you if we could have a resupply.
I reached out to the governor's office, said I don't want any hear back from the rep, but I'm gonna ask for some sanitizer, especially in light of the parade on Saturday.
I don't, I know a lot of older people come to the parade, and I talked to Bob about possibly finding a spot where people could park their cars, if they didn't wanna get out of their car and be safe, and to park along the parade route, and we discussed probably out here by the post office if they, was anybody that wanted to.
That makes sense. That makes sense.
So if there's anybody out there that wants to do that, let us know.
I know a lot of times, a lot of people park over on, on Church Street, up past the Armory.
Yep.
By the old Dodge, yeah, we had it all through there, usually four, five, six cars pulling it up.
You could line up a bunch of cars right up.
Yeah, and they have, I've seen it in the past.
Maybe we work on a Facebook message about Thursday, um, about trying to get people who, we're, we're trying to save parking for people who don't wanna be out in, in, in large crowds, that sort of thing, but maybe we can talk about that.
For the papers as well.
Order out for the papers.
Oh, so the senior, the parking lot down by the senior center.
Just have everybody contact the chief.
That front, that front row.
I anticipate a, a pretty good crowd.
Yeah, I do too. I do too.
I mean, we even get those requested, even when there's not anything going on. The people, elderly people are looking for a place to sit in their car, 'cause a lot, a lot of times it's cold.
Yeah.
In this case, probably even a few more that wanna come, but don't.
Don't wanna be exposed, right?
Yep. Let's work on language on that tonight and tomorrow morning. When's your deadline?
Tonight.
We'll be working after the meeting. Alright.
And, and Mayor, probably, within that message, if you could have a link, I know Mark circulated, C D C specifically has one for ass-gathering events for communities.
Yep.
So that, that link would be very helpful.
Okay.
I couldn't open that link, though.
No, you had to, you, the one, yeah, the one, there was one of them, you had to actually punch it in.
Yeah, I tried, I tried to, and I couldn't, it was that, from the C D C, I tried opening, I couldn't.
Yeah, I went right to the C D C site and got access to that one.
Yep.
Okay, cause I know what, what was sent, I could, I tried.
No, I, I realized that after the fact.
Copying and pasting it.
So if anybody has any sanitizer squirt, swirled away anywhere, good luck.
Or sell it on the black market. Alright, um, people to be heard section is now, if you'd like to speak about anything. Just a reminder to, um, speak your name and address, and as always, we record all of our meetings audio-wise, and they end up on our YouTube site, so to keep that in mind. Would anyone like to share or speak tonight? Just one? Alright, take it away, sir.
Richard Hunt, A E Z Street. Just concerned about the golf course expansion or whatever's going on up there again. I was here last fall. Nobody seemed to know much was going on. Several acres have been clear cut now.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's, you know, endangered wildlife habitat, whatever that be. Your Woodbrook, Brooks itself now has no slowdown, it's a wide-open path right to the village.
What do you mean, so wide open path?
Crosswood Brook now coming up the other side. Where there's no trees left.
Well, it wasn't slowed down by trees earlier, right?
Well, it was all encased by trees, so if water raised, it would, the trees would slow it down. So now it's got a little bit faster path.
Well, as far as, uh, I know, that they had been in touch with D E C to make sure they handled that, in particular the Woods Brook issue, the right way. I'm trying to see on my map here where they're clearing.
I just wish you would, about the public more so, you know, we're all in the dark about what's going on, you just hear the chippers going every day, grinders going every day.
Mark, has he gone to you? I mean, he's gone to you, but didn't he, he's, he's applied for a build, a burn permit as well, too?
Yep.
As far as I know, he's, he's done all the stuffs, he's, he's, uh, brought D E C in from the very beginning, he's, you know, you know, I, I, the clear-cutting thing is, you know, it's, it was all scrub brush, in my opinion anyway, it wasn't like it was sure trees down there. It was, they were junk trees. He's, it's his property, he's cleaning up his property, and yeah, but he does have a five-year plan. You know, I, he's not hiding anything from anybody, as far as I know, it's, you know, he wants to add a couple more holes. He talked about it, I guess some places have like twelve or thirteen.
He wants to make it a twelve-hole course, right, that's what I heard, right.
Okay.
You know, I think he's working toward that goal, he's cleaning things up and.
Everything, every communication we've had has, he's been going through all the proper channels, he's been checking with the village officials, he's been checking with D E C. Even on the burn ban, he was, he reached out to us, he reached out to firefighter, fighters, D E C, all. Even on the burn ban, he was, he reached out to us. He reached out to firefighter fighters, DEC, all got the approval on that. But I can always find out, see if he has sort of an end game.
Why don't you make a diagram of what his plans are and have it out for the public to see? I didn't really buy a house there to have the golf course right straight across from my house.
Where's your house?
Right across, well, from where he's coming up through, right, right straight across the way.
Are you on Rogers or Griffin?
No, he's on Ball Street.
He's on Easy Street.
Oh, Ball, oh, other side, okay.
He's on Easy Street.
Okay.
So he's, he's coming up through the bank to the fifteen.
So you can't see what he's doing, like from, from the road, like on Ball Street extension, you can't see what he's doing?
Oh, you, I just walked right across the street and you can see everything that's going on.
Right, but I'm, I can see like when I go up Griffin Avenue, I know what he's doing on the.
You can see it from Ball Street.
You can?
Yeah.
On your, on your side, what he's doing? You mean down that side?
If you drive up to Ball Street.
Like number four.
Come to my house, we can see everything really.
Okay.
It's, it's clearly wide open now. I mean, even up on the other side, up off of Rogers and stuff, I mean, he's taking a lot of trees down.
Oh, yeah.
So just, you know, golf is a fun sport, yelling screaming. You had some trees that blocked some of that, they're disappearing fast.
I never yell or scream when I go.
Only when you get home alone.
What are you yelling screaming for, right?
What does he have for erosion control up there?
What's that?
What does he have for erosion control? Does he have that listed?
I know that his plans have gone through DEC and, and in terms of especially.
So he has a set of plans with DEC?
I don't know if he has specific plans. I know he's spoken with DEC about his plans and how they relate to the Woods.
He doesn't have specific plans. Actually, I don't think he knows exactly what he.
It's work in progress, right?
It's work in progress. He is familiar with erosion control from his construction business, you know, so.
I know, I walked up there and I, I saw these, these barriers he's put up for erosion control for, so he doesn't lose topsoil, so it doesn't spread.
What are those barriers?
It's some kind of black fabric.
It's a black, yeah.
Oh, you've got the landscape fabric?
Yeah.
No, I know it's landscape fabric.
It's above ground though. It's raised above ground.
Yeah, that's what they use. They stake it out, put the hay bales down through.
Yeah. I saw that on, that's on number sixteen.
So that's his erosion control.
Yeah, Rich, I can reach out to him and see if he's got any plans or.
It'd be nice to know if he does plan on clear cutting it all the way up to the end of his property line, you know, I mean.
No.
You definitely just push all the wildlife and anything that comes around there right out, it's gonna be gone.
Have you reached out to him at all?
I have not.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, I'll reach out. Thank you.
Um, second thing, in the, I know probably John Coons talked to you a little bit about the houses that were taken over by the village. Any progress on if they're gonna be available for drilling for the fire department?
This is regarding the fire department. The short answer is yes, but the long answer is it's gonna take some time to get there. Do you wanna summarize that a little more?
Well, we've had to reach out to the state. The way the program was designed was using state funds to acquire the properties and we budgeted for demolition. There's limited things that the village can do with the properties once they've obtained title. So we reached out to the state. We need to confirm that that activity is quite frankly permissible prior to demolition. The village is gonna be doing some of the demolition work. It's proposing to do some of the demolition work itself and simply have disposal costs for the debris. So a lot of that does need to be coordinated when you have a state program involved. It just takes a little bit. The, the easy answer is it hasn't been denied, but there's still a little bit of work to get there.
And, and the other easy answer is it's not coming anytime soon because we still have to get our guys trained to demolition and schedule the demolition. There may be another property or two that's acquired, but we are still very committed to getting that to work out.
It's not very.
Awesome. For those of you guys who don't know, the, we've, we've obtained some houses through the Woods Brook to make some permanent fixes on them. The fire department wants to use these buildings to basically run tests and drills and sometimes that would be like ripping through a wall because that's a scenario that may happen in a fire.
You're not talking burning, right?
No burning.
Oh, okay.
No burning at all. No, just, you know, you go in a room and you say you got trapped in the room to reach that room to get into the next.
Yep. And you guys got to do that with, which building was it? The one on First Street?
We went down to actually Missoula before they leveled up.
Yep.
They were allowed to go in there and do some work in there too.
So we would be very happy to, to let this happen, so we're, we're working on it. It won't be anytime soon. Honestly, if we did demo, I don't need, would you think it'd be fall this year? What's that?
Fall or winter time.
Okay, so that's probably the season that this will happen, but we're, we're, we're still very much in the fort.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Alright, moving on. Yeah, sir.
Let me talk about that. The resident on Main Street is concerned about the house next door and the hole that's in the ground.
This is one oh fifteen. It's, it's one fifteen. This is, yeah, we're, we're, we're waiting for.
Next to Bolson's? Oh, okay.
I don't think the house is gonna fall, but you can't guarantee that.
We said, it's still taped off, right?
She said that there's a hole there and the bricks are falling into the creek.
Oh, that's a separate issue. Bricks falling in are a separate issue.
Which, are these bricks to the house and foundation or other bricks?
It's the actual roof of the.
The roof or the culvert underneath?
Great.
But is that on the buyout list, that house that's next to it?
Yeah. We run into a little bit of a situation, but.
This is something we're trying to coordinate with the county. Again, the way this program worked is the properties needed to be appraised and the proposed purchase price cannot be above the current fair market value. So we sat down with that particular property owner, did negotiate a contract for current fair market value. It's significantly lower than the amount of the current back taxes. So this is, this is raised an issue with coordination with the county on how to get that resolved.
Yeah.
Because if it does go to the county through failure to pay back taxes, the county may be facing a situation where it has titled a property that has an unsafe building.
Yeah.
Whereas if the village acquires title, the program is designed to demolish it with state funds. And we've met with the county on that issue, but unfortunately haven't made much progress.
And I have a follow up call with the county on a bunch of other issues, so I'm gonna bring that up again as well.
Well, the, the problem is if it gets foreclosed on, it goes to auction, the county has title to the property. So they either never get their back taxes.
Or if the village buys it, they have to pay back.
There, there, there's a way to get this done, but.
Whatever it's get down.
Clear economic minds have to be at the table.
That's right.
There's a state program.
What's that? Oh, it's condemned, yeah.
The other question is about that one there. If, I know we talked about fall or winter. Some of these properties are looking like garbage. I mean, we got orange barriers all over the house and it's been, it's been there for almost a year now.
Is that the same building you're talking about?
On our, on our Main Street. I'd rather see them tore down quicker than fall or.
Us too, us too.
The one there is the same, that's the same house. That's one fifteen because of that front wall.
Yep. Yeah, we're, we're very much in the same boat, so, yeah. Alright, reports. Uh, treasure report. Anything you want to summarize then?
I'll summarize what I got in the text from Denise Lee today.
Okay.
Anna report was filed with state, having usual cash crunch month of March. Everyone needs to lay low on their spending.
Yes.
She's also finishing up abstract and hope to get a budget, a budget to actual put to you guys. So I'm assuming that's all the budget stuff that they're working on. Plus, in the report, it mentions that the budget request forms went to the department heads, so.
Uh, yeah, Denise has been working on putting the numbers in. I've, I've reformatted it quite a bit, so hopefully, presentation wise, we're adding a little bit more to the, to the, to the overview so that you can see historically back another year. But that's coming soon. I think I have, in about the next two weeks, I think is my deadline to get that to you guys, to all the board members. And we will have time to present it in the April meeting, go over it and make decisions on it in time for. Yeah, in about a week and a half. So it's, it's coming very soon. That's the next big thing for us. Anything else?
No, that's it.
In that case, looking for a motion to approve the treasure report.
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby. Need a second? Anyone? Thank you, Kevin. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Post, carries. Our normal approvers are not here today, so we're gonna step it up. Yeah. Alright, police report. Chief.
Hey, um, total calls for February were a hundred and forty-six. So far this year is two hundred and sixty-two compared to last year, which was two hundred and fifty-two. Total arrests for this month were fourteen. Total arrests for the, for the year right now was at thirty-three. I just wanna highlight, there's a number of service calls there, but the biggest one there, the C D C, forty service calls with EMS. We're gonna be doing some additional training for our officers. I do have some basic life support for view officers and I have a couple of E M Ts, but I think we're gonna try to increase that with our officers because those quote items are increasing.
Is that why the number is up so high, Bob? Cause it's like, I mean, one forty-six is a, look, January was a hundred and sixteen.
Right.
So that's.
There was an increase on that and domestics are always kind of in that area there too. But there's been a more call on the EMS side that, that I've noticed, so I think there's gonna be some additional training. Um, the training that we did with the mental health went over really well. I just got notified by the trainer that it's a ticket to be in for everybody, so they, they should be headed over. We got some really good P R throughout the, the area with it and additional partners at fault for this training. So it really did, did well. And we offered our services to the county to assist with them on additional training they have. St. Patrick's Parade, we're all set. Neil will probably be setting up Friday night and our officer will get the signs out right in the early. The one thing I met with the, the borrowers, everyone seems to have something going on at night. What I've asked them is they put additional staff on to handle whatever happens inside. They'll call us if they need. They all have my cell phone number, so they'll be calling me whenever they, said if it's an emergency, dial nine one one, but if it's an inquiry, and they wanna really talk to me, reach out. I'll be here throughout the night anyway, so. The one thing I said to them was not, not serving the class. They're gonna be sticking with the cans and the plastic cups. I don't have a problem if they go from one place to another if it's in a plastic cup. I don't. We've had that question before in the past and we've allowed that to happen and there's been no problems whatsoever. I think as the years have passed here, I know one year was really bad, but that was an exception to the rule. They had a barn here that just was not listening to us, but everybody else has been working great and we'll have some additional officers on, but I'm, I'm not concerned with, with the night.
Right.
Safe ride home, and I gave you those numbers tonight.
Yep, that's a safe ride home situation. And remind me, I do have raffle tickets that I've been selling. I gotta give you that money tonight. But if there's any other questions or concerns, then we shout, but I think we're gonna.
Great.
Is the safe ride home speed tax need again this year?
Yes, it is.
Yep.
Alright.
Flyers are out and all of the bars. Must pay for Facebook.
The training was great. I only got to go for about an hour, but it was really good. The book was good and the speaker was awesome. Awesome, awesome, awesome. Next time, we'll make sure we're in a room where we're not using chairs intended for first graders.
That was only our down.
I was there for an hour and I was just done.
That was a little interesting.
What's that?
Would you get that for lunch?
Uh, after lunch. I missed lunch, but I got some leftovers.
I, I do have to say, Maniket again stepped up. I was sending lunches over, going out, many employees sent the pastries and, um, how to get bonded concrete. They, they purchased all the coffee, so I can give them a little bit.
Good stuff.
A shout out as well, so.
Thank you.
It went really well.
Yeah, it was a very good class. Very interesting.
Any other questions? Motion, looking for motion to approve the police department report?
Motion, second.
Oh my goodness, I don't even know. Alright, Kevin, Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries, code enforcement report, Mark.
Uh, mine is just more of the same. I don't think there's anything, how do you, in there? Anybody have any questions on that?
Did you get a list yet from the county for the properties sold?
They never sent a list. I got a couple of property transfers through today.
Yeah.
From Tony.
I haven't gotten it either, but. He said he's waiting for all the properties to be paid and that, that's what, May, May sixteenth, that they're paid for by?
Oh, I know what it is. Well, I'm getting the property transfers. We're getting them much quicker now than we used to, so that's working out better. And I've already talked to one of the property owners, you property owners.
I know the house on Church Street there was one of the houses that has a sign that's now saying no trespassing.
That's the property owner I talked to. Interesting point about that is that's a two family house that sold as a one family. But I, I don't know when that classification changed. That house is, you know, it was a rental property when I first started. So I worked with Tony on that, did an inspection to verify that in fact it is a two family and we changed the classification.
Is he aware that the front foundation is caving in there or?
It's not caving in.
No?
No, I went into the basement because I was concerned about that, so I went, I told them I wanted to see it, so they'll be in the basement. And it's just the dirt that has settled and gone and kind of washed down. It doesn't even look like it washed in.
So it's just, the foundation's just been exposed?
It's been exposed.
Yeah, there was.
It was a flood, so, you know, you get water like that and, but my thought was exactly that. I'm thinking that wall, that front wall has been compromised, like, you know, one fifteen, but I did not see any indications from the inside of that.
Any other questions, Mark? Looking for a motion to approve the code enforcement report?
Motion, second.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries. Thank you, Mark. Community service report, huge numbers this year, uh, this month, hundred and eighty hours for the month of February. They did a whole bunch of stuff, including a lot of work in the new highway garage. Lot of painting, a lot of coats, and there's more going on. They've also been in the Mac of Conception, Rescue Squad and so on. Looking for motion to approve the community service report?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. How's the work going down there, Neil? Did you do a good job on the painting?
Yeah, still getting there.
Good stuff.
Except for Saturday, when somebody got foolish and painted the hallway color in the bathroom, which was already a different color, so they had to repaint the bathroom.
So do they get more community service? No, no, no.
Yeah.
Alright. Village clerk, deputy clerk report, with Marie's request, we included the draft minutes from the planning board on March. So that is in there as well. Anything you wanna highlight?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Basically, basically things going on. We're gonna be, the new water will be going out the first week or second week in April. So we have a new billing system that we're gonna be utilizing, so it'll be fun.
Fun is hopefully the right word.
So fifteen Church Street is gonna be a general store?
Yes, the old Daniels building?
Yeah.
It's gonna be an, um, general store, Delia Bakery on the first floor and upstairs. It's gonna have two apartments.
Marion, yeah. Yep.
Janet's moving.
And Janet is moving, yeah.
When I get the other place fit to move into, which is not tomorrow.
Where is that, where you're going to, the old corner closet?
Right on the corner, yes, Martin.
Yep, Martins, okay.
Corner closet, that's really going back, Bob.
Great spot.
I know, I'm dating myself.
That was, that was my first place I went for an eye doctor here. That was when I started, when I started living here, so. And the, the school did meet with the planning board to discuss a possibility of relocating the bus garage onto One Mechanic Street. It's a property that's owned by Pat Bicardis, so there's more coming from that. It says the school has to work, that's the next work with the New York State Board of Ed and work with Pat in a long term lease before they move forward. So just an FYI on that.
So it's going to lease, the school's not gonna buy the property, they're gonna lease the property?
Yeah, and I got to speak with Pat about that. There's reasons why for the school, it's better to lease than to own because of some of the rules. But in our situation, it's better for us because if they're leasing from Pat.
They don't pay taxes.
That means, yeah, that means it stays on the tax.
Right.
And Pat pays the taxes and he just, you know, gets reimbursed through the school and, or not reimbursed, that's the business.
I know a lot of merchants downtown were concerned about dumping all the buses off downtown all at one point. Are they discussing taking alternate routes so that they don't dump off all fifteen buses at the same time out of Church Street or?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how they will branch out.
They did talk about it at the meeting.
So will some take the other direction?
They will, they will take the other direction. They also discussed the current way the buses go and how few would, you know, be coming that way and changing it. But they definitely are taking that into consideration. The plans that the architect showed us had the, you know, coming in and out of the turns and everything was pretty well laid out, so they've got a lot of that covered.
I know that, um, my, my guess is if they, and I'm going for this and making this switch, they will have to relook at and probably readdress some of the bus routes based on this new location and mileage and so on and so forth.
He was discussing that, yes.
Yep. Alright. I'm looking for a motion to approve the clerk report.
Motion.
Sorry.
Bobby?
Did I suppose something?
Yes, motion again.
And looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries. Highway department reports. Anything you wanna highlight?
Neil, anything? Um, what are, are we gonna discuss? Um, what are, are we gonna discuss the bids for the general?
Yes, the bids are coming up in the.
That's on the rest of the, you got the rest.
Yeah, business.
Yep. What are you saying Neil? Um, uh, we did have some concerns about, um, the punch list that came from the subcontractor and the punch list that came from the, um, main contractor and our own individual punch list. They hit a lot of things, but there's a few things that we, uh, have noted that they did not hit. So we're bringing that up with, um, uh, the contractors to make sure, uh, things are done, um, properly. And there's a couple wall things or floor things.
As Neil said before the meeting, there's some floor issues, so.
Yeah. Any other issues? There's a lot, I know there's a lot they listed out.
There's, I found a lot of cat spending stuff, so.
Is it a lot of little things Neil? Or is it, it's nothing like showstopping, right? It's just, it's.
You know, unfortunately the concrete floor is done, so we're gonna have to try to look at seeing if we can get some type of credit. Same thing with that wall issue.
Right, where it's not square.
Yeah, where they, um.
Right, put the countertop in.
The countertop in is, it's obviously not square, yeah.
Right.
Yep. Okay. All right, thank you Neil.
Uh, when you say, uh, other, other issues, can we speak?
Uh, I will, we had that section, but I'll come back and, and, and give that to you in a, in a bit. Um, looking for motion to approve the highway department?
Motion, second.
Um, Ben and whoever you want to give that to, all in favor? Opposed, carries. Sewer report. Um, um, kind of the same old, same old. It's obviously a downtime for, for, um, for sludge, but they still had some, some good income on that. Um, and, uh, they did get the, uh, worked with, uh, J Squared and Aqua Logix, who's the sub, on getting the new skater system online with the new internet connection. Uh, so that's pretty much it for, um, for the sewer department.
It looks like they're still about eighteen thousand ahead of, seventeen, seventeen plus ahead of last year, so.
Yep.
I mean, that's really good.
Yes, yes. All right, looking for motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Thank you Bobby, thank you Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. And the water report. I don't know if there's anything in particular that needs to be highlighted. Um.
We're not selling much water this time of year.
No, no, it turns out, no. Um, just the. Yeah, they had some issues with communications between pump station, the plant, but they have our standard guys out there to fix that. So, uh, with that, looking for motion to approve the water report?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you Ben, thank you Emily, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes approval. Um, we have the regular minute, minutes, uh, from the February eleventh. Is there anything you guys needed to comment on or note or mention?
I made the motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you Bobby.
Approve them?
Thank you Emily. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, great. Trustee and committee reports. Emily, anything? Um, Bobby?
Uh, I just wanted to bring up one thing. I know it's spring's coming and, uh, I know, um, Bob's gone right now, but he can attest this. They, um, had a, uh, ten-year-old get hit by a bike on River Street on Sunday, uh, evening, uh, afternoon. Um, fortunately he had a helmet on, yes. He had a helmet on and fortunately the person driving was paying attention. It was, the sun was blinding and he came right out of, uh, First Street, never even stopped and hit the car head on. Ended up on the hood of the, hood of the car.
So it was by River Street and First Street?
Uh, yeah, right on, he came out of, uh, Yevanesci's yard, right, and, uh, I actually talked to the driver today and asked him how he was doing because, you know, he was fortunately, it was, you know, he was scared to, he said it was life-changing, you know, so, but it's just, it's that time of year where more kids, kids do not pay attention. They just come across the road and, and there's more and more bikes in the road than on the sidewalk, so. Just want to make aware that people are, you know, be, be, uh, you know, vigilant for the kids that are, uh, all over the road, so that's all.
Thank you.
Fortunately he didn't, uh, Bob, I talked to Bob about it that night and, uh, he only got a few bumps and bruises because he had the helmet on. So he was, just had some, a few scratches and, but he's, he's totally fine.
That's really good. I was in the area where it did not go that way. Now it's pretty devastating, so that's good. All right, thank you Bobby.
Yeah, that's, that's all I had.
Ben, your final?
Now that the, uh, minutes are approved, um, I will send my resignation letter to, uh, Urswama, which is the Eastern Rensley County Solid Waste Standing for an Authority.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I put Matt in touch with Emily. Emily will be the new representative, as she was voted in the last meeting in, in February. Um, the minutes being approved just finishes that part off. Uh, there's a meeting in April, um, that hopefully Emily will be able to attend. Um, and they're talking in between, so everything seems to be moving in a, in a good direction on that, so.
Awesome. Great, thank you for heading that off. Thank you for all of your Urswama time and so on and so on. Kevin?
Um, there was a, a TV commercial about, from, it wasn't from him, but about Huzick Falls and it was really dark about the PFOA crisis and that people, uh, how bad the PFOA was and that, uh, it's caused even death. I don't know if anybody saw that, but, um.
That's the Delgado commercial?
Right, it wasn't by him, it was supporting him, but it was done by an environmental group. And I called and evidently several other Huzick Falls residents called as well to complain about it and, you know, that we're trying to move past the PFOA, although we, we can't, we still have to work on what we have, uh, dealt, you know, so far. But, um, they're aware of it and they went to the election commissioner, whoever receives, uh, campaign ads and they can't go to this group and address the issue with that. It's against the law.
They can't?
They can't.
It's a campaign issue with who?
It's an environmental group that's put out this ad, but they're supporting Delgado's reelection campaign.
And so they can't tell them what they can and can't?
They're supporting the bills that he's put forth.
Oh, okay, 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 to clear up the problem.
I, yes.
So he's saying this is the big problem and he's helping it?
The pictures, the pictures are black and white. They show Huzick Falls in a bad light and then at the end they say the PFOA has caused even death at the end is the last sentence of the, uh.
And he's working to, they actually mentioned Huzick Falls, right?
Yeah, the whole, it mentions Huzick Falls in the picture.
I'm pretty sure it says Newburg as well. I think I've seen what you're talking about. Yeah, I think it says all three.
So anyway, I got in touch with their office and I, and they, they went and they did some research on it and, uh, so there's nothing they can do, but I did talk to them. I said, there's some good things happening in Huzick Falls. It would be nice of the congressman and I think he's done some good work as far as the PFOA issue is concerned.
Definitely.
To come back to Huzick Falls and take a look at some of the good things that are happening. And he's gonna come back sometime in April, go to, uh, Beast Trail forty-two.
Awesome.
And some of the other businesses that opened up and, uh, highlight some of the good things that are happening, not just looking at the negatives.
That'd be great. I know he was here at the, uh, SIPWIG meeting when the EPA Region Two Administrator was here. Uh, and he, uh, he had quite a lot to say to the regional administrator advocacy-wise. It was quite good to see, but, but yes, your point is well taken. We need to be shifting to, uh, that was a thing, it did happen, but we have, uh, a lot of other things going on. When people keep sensationalizing that, we kind of.
And the funny thing is, one of the guys did call Delgado's office after I did, was the guy that owns Beast Trail forty-two. He saw the ad as well and he said, geez, I'm trying to open a business here and, uh, we're getting this kind of publicity, so.
All right. Anything else, Ken? All right, great, thank you. Before we go to old business, I'll open it back up to the people-to-be-heard section. As I said before, please state your name and address and, uh, what would you like to say?
Okay, I, I'm Dr. Regis Scott, Littleville thirty-four Wander Avenue. And unfortunately I haven't been able to get here for the last, oh, six or seven meetings. I have a number of issues that I wanted to bring up, all right? Are you ready?
I am ready.
Mr. Allen.
Ready, fire away.
Uh, back on the, um, uh, twenty-ninth, excuse me, of, um, December two thousand and eighteen, I wrote to you, Mr. Allen, asking for information relative to the bond and sewer bond payments, excuse me, that we get billed, what is it, three or four times a year?
Three. Three times a year.
I never got an answer from you. I finally put in a Freedom of Information Law request to Marie over here and I did get that information.
Oh, okay.
All right? Now, that information should be given automatically to the taxpayers. And one important part of it, uh, and I can tell you as a tax professional amongst other things, is that they can take those deductions on their itemized returns to the federal government as a deduction under line six of other deductions, okay? As a municipal bond deduction, which is a, uh, a, a, a tax deductible item. Do you have that? That would require that the village send out a form, I think it's a ten ninety-eight form, to everybody else. Well, that would be expensive, I understand, confusing. So why doesn't the village just simply send that information out to people to accumulate the amounts that they pay on those bond and sewer bond deductions, okay? Accumulate them to know that they can, on their itemized IRS deductions, take them, okay? Then that would relieve you of a lot of expense. But otherwise, otherwise you, you respond, you, you respond, you, you should be doing that and sending that to the IRS, okay? One way or the other, I'm, I'm giving you an option of doing it for a cheap way of doing it.
So that would relieve the village or relieve the taxpayer or both of the expenses?
Well, you, 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 well, no, it wouldn't. Under IRS law, it wouldn't relieve the village, but it would at least give you an out, okay?
Okay.
Okay? Cause I realize it would be expensive and time-consuming and you'd have to pay Marie a lot of extra time, right, Marie?
Okay?
All right? I'm, I'm making a point. I hope that the point is well taken. All right? The last point I want to take is that, um, I also asked Marie for the budget of the village. And I haven't asked her this before. And I talked to other people in other communities and they can't believe that we automatically don't get this information.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
They all did? I mean, I lived in panel before I came to Huzick Falls. We used to get a booklet with this information.
Like a hard copy booklet?
We used to get a booklet, okay? What is the present bu- budget? What happened last year compared to the present year? Okay?
Okay.
And that should be given. So I took a look at the, cause Marie did give it to me, she's been very cooperative, I thank you Marie, um, uh, that, uh, showed me the budget for this year. One of the things that really hit me was the budget for the fed, uh, excuse me, for the lawyer, lawyer charges for PFOA. I also wrote you, which is the second time I wrote you, which you never sent me an answer back again, saying why would you hire lawyers to discuss the issues really relative to the PFOA? When they have no training in what is needed to discuss those issues? You never answered me. I also had a letter published in the Bennington banner relative to those issues. Okay? Now, I don't want to pump my thing, but relative to those issues in terms of quantitative methods that would have to be used and so forth, I have a doctorate in business administration amongst other things and a master's in economics. Lawyers have no training at all. Why are you hiring lawyers to do something they have no training to do, okay? And paying them all this, what was it, forty, forty-eight thousand dollars in this current budget? And I don't, I haven't had any answers relative to this and, uh, you know, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm not trying to, um, attack anybody. I'm simply saying, look, lawyers should not be involved because they have nothing to do with legal issues. Relative to legal issues on PFOA, okay? The legal principle, okay, is ipse locutor. That is, the speak speaks for herself. There is no question that they are responsible, so there's not a question of liability. So if you want to negotiate, okay? How they are going to deal with this in the future, they have no, lawyers have no training. Well, you take an under issue, you ever want to discuss it with me or other people?
I, I have a question. So you're saying that we shouldn't have a lawyer to represent us?
No.
In regards to negotiating with the polluters of the?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
And do you feel that they won't have a lawyer, the companies?
The, that would only come down to a, okay, a resolution, okay? In terms of a contractual resolution and how that contract would be put together, all right? But in terms of how you negotiate it, okay? The issues that need to be negotiated, how is negotiated, lawyers have no training.
Well, they may not have, I, I, I'm, I'm, I don't know if I, they don't have training, but.
Well, I do, I do, I do.
But the lawyers that we have for, to, are negotiating for us are, have training in environmental law. That's what they're environmental law lawyers. So they do have the actual training in negotiating for this type of pollution.
Part of it.
We, we are not experts, they are.
No, part of it may be, but not the negotiation in, okay?
You're talking the economic side of things.
I think the issues relative to environmental law, okay? All right, that's one thing. But in terms of how you negotiate, could you tell me if any lawyer knows how to do Bayesian probability? How to do regression analysis, just a few of quantitative methods? They have no idea in terms of how you negotiate, all right?
I, uh.
And, and, and if you, if you want to hire people, look around for individuals who have training. I'm not looking for that job, even though I'm more than well-trained. I'm just simply saying, look around and don't simply hire lawyers to do something relative to liability when the liability is clear, um, you know, unambiguous.
All right, well, uh, I do owe you an apology for not getting back to your two letters. I still have them, they're in my overgrowing stack of to-dos, but, uh, I do owe you a response, maybe a phone call or a sit-down sometime.
Well, I left you two letters and never responded to them.
Yep, my apologies.
But, but anyway, that's beside the point. Uh, I, I just wanted, I, it's been a while before I came here. I want to be a good citizen, okay?
Concerns are always love.
Marie's been a very good cooperative lady and, um, uh, and, uh, just wanted to bring up a couple of points. Whether you agree with me or not.
That's all right. Uh, in the meantime, do me a favor, look up the, the name Dr. Ed Whitelaw.
Huh?
Dr. Ed Whitelaw. He is an expert that we brought in to handle how to quantify.
And why is this Dr. Ed?
Uh, he owns a whole company on the West Coast and what they do is they look at, um, situations like ours where they have to put a quantifiable number on the financial effect of pollution, all the different layers of how that would have an effect on the various parts of what the village action is. And then they have to quantify that over time using various economic models, which I would not even pretend to describe because I don't understand them. But he's an example of an expert that we brought in to help us quantify a situation like that because we knew that, A, our attorneys aren't understanding that.
Well, uh, on, on June the twenty-fifth of, uh, two thousand and eighteen, there was a general meeting and there was a lawyer there and I raised the question, why lawyers? And he used a, uh, sophisticated, sophisticated, uh, thing by saying, I know an economist, which had nothing to do with, of course, the issues that, uh, we were talking about. But, um, I'd be more than happy to talk to you, uh, about those issues. I do have expertise. I, I, I'm not here to talk about my, you know, my particular qualifications, et cetera. But I'd be more than happy to talk to you.
Thank you.
If I can be helpful and it would cost you a lot less. In fact, it would cost you nothing compared to what you're paying lawyers, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Scott, thank you.
All right.
All right, before we move on to the old business students, if you guys want to have whatever you need, signs.
Oh, incidentally.
You can certainly bring those up and we'll sign those for you.
We're, we're putting our flags up for St. Patrick's.
Oh, yeah.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you. And again, my apologies for not getting back to you.
No, 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 no. I mean, look, I understand, but
One or the other, whatever's good.
What an incredible run you guys had.
Yeah, good job.
There you go. I know it. Yeah, go practice your music. All right, let's get back to the meeting.
Anyone else?
Those are lights flickering.
I don't know, it just flickered though.
Just the one or was it a couple of them? It was the kids leaving, I thought it was.
It was Neil.
Okay, old business. Um, the Snow Street Waterline Rensselaer Street Pump Station. The last we had discussed, we were looking for some background on the condition of the water heater. Bobby, do you want to give that update?
Yeah, I, I spoke with the plumber who removed the hot water heater at that residence and asked him the condition, the overall condition of the hot water heater. And he said it had many more years left on it. He said it received some type of surge in pressure is what caused it to split.
You're good.
So
I'm gonna grab my blinder.
Okay. Uh, Rob's probably got the date.
Yeah, he's gonna get it.
There's, there was, it was from the rent, the pump, the Rensselaer pump station. Oh, it was back, it was, it was back maybe in the summer. It was a while.
I want to say September.
Two months ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
September.
Yeah, but turn that into a pump station.
I, I just say it's just kind of funny. It's kind of funny that it's the same thing. Mine, mine ended up broken.
You know, mine went too, now that you guys
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm up there on my, on my
I'm trying to remember exactly what the, the, the price was that she was asking for.
I want to say around seven hundred, somewhere around that is what I wanted to say. I don't, from looking at the voucher, I don't Or the letter, I should say. I can't remember exactly, but
I'm bringing, I'm finding the old email here. When we last talked, Andy, we, we had voiced the, the situation that we in fact really did need to get some backup on the fact that the water heater did have some time left and it did have some time left.
Yes, and, and, and he was, like you said, there was no doubt in his mind that the cause was a pressure surge that caused the tank to rupture. Like you said, I, it wasn't brand new. He's not saying it was brand new, but it had, you know, like you said, some hot water heaters, he said they go from five years to some, the last thirty years, you know, you never know, I mean.
Oh, it's a letter.
Yeah, it was a letter.
I don't have, I don't have the exact amount of what we were, um, what the original price was and what the refund was. Probably kind of need that to act on it.
Do you want me to go get it?
Yeah, do you want to go look for it? If not, I can go look for it and I can pass it off to Bobby. All right, we'll come back to that in a minute.
No problem.
Yeah, if you can get that. If not, I can, I can grab my folder that's gonna have all of our stuff in it. All right, let's move, I'll come back to that. Transfer station. We haven't had any ti, any discussions yet on looking at this, so I'm looking to have this tabled again.
Motion to table.
Okay.
All right, that's Ben and Emily. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Carries. Thank you. Uh, Scott, we had tabled discussing the disbursement of funds between HAC three and the youth center. I did confirm to Denise that we should get the fifteen hundred as we planned over to the youth center. We're still waiting to hear from HAC three. Kevin, you gave us an update on that, I think. Did you? Was it you?
Um, I did, but it's not really to share.
Okay. Uh, you had some notes on it, but we have nothing yet. So I think it sounds like we need to table this again.
Motion to
I mean, it's something that hasn't happened, so I, I can't really
So, okay, so in a sense, they're really not ready to present yet.
No, they, it probably should be pretty soon, though.
Okay, all right.
I'll second the motion to table.
Who was the first?
I was.
All right, thank you. I'm writing this down for Marie, who's doing the work I forgot to do earlier. Thank you.
Who's that?
Uh, we haven't voted on this, so all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carries. Thank you. Um, discussion about a fine for a lack of a water meter. We have more information on this.
Mine was offline temporarily.
So the quick version, uh, in review, uh, we billed them three times for not having a water meter. Uh, when in fact they did have the water meter installed, but because they were billed as though not having water meter, it's, it's sufficiently, significantly more money. We did ask them for a receipt proving that it was installed and we did get that receipt. Uh, we have that here somewhere. Marie's got it. When she comes back in, we'll get that from her. Um, but since we have the proof that, uh, the story is as it is, the original plan, I think they had paid, they didn't pay the April nineteen water bill. They did pay the August nineteenth water bill and that had a, a lot of extra money. So the request is based on the way that Denise ran the numbers to adjust for the usage and the extra water meter fee they don't have to pay. Uh, it would come back to a credit of fifteen seventeen dot eighty, one thousand five hundred seventeen dollars eighty-eight cents. That would refund the, I think, one of the water meter fines and, uh, some of the usage.
How much was the fine?
It was up to fifteen hundred per, per bill. Uh, that's something that we've been trying to get. I mean, this was before I started as mayor. They were trying to get people to do this and we decided to start raising, um, the, the law was written so you could raise it, like literally like on like a weekly or monthly basis. Oh, this? We brought it up last meeting in February, um, but we tabled it because we didn't have the, the proof.
I think this
All right, um, let me sneak through here. Can you, um, um, just briefly summarize the water bill, the receipt that we have and how that plays into the refund that Denise requested?
Okay.
Okay, this is for Carrie Adna?
Yeah.
Did he, where, did he go where with it?
No, just that
Just about the receipt.
Okay, yeah, so we were waiting on the receipt that he did have the work done and the water meter was installed. So he did finally bring that into us, um, so that it was installed back in December of twenty eighteen, which meant there was a meter in there.
And have they been, they've paid?
They, so they paid the non-meter fine, so
So they did pay the fine?
They had paid
Rental property?
Nope. Tank Carrie Adna.
How much was the fine?
It's fifteen hundred dollars.
So now we're going to, we're discussing giving them credit from their water for that fifteen hundred dollars against their water
Discussing whether they have a credit, adjusted the bills with what has been paid and what is owed. There's an adjustment due to them of fifteen seventeen eighty-eight.
Fifteen hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-eight cents?
So he's, they're, they're getting seventeen dollars and eighty-eight cents for the water?
Pretty much, Emily, if they pay fifteen hundred.
Yeah, like
Right.
Well, it's over, it's over the year. It's the three
All three?
It's all three. So essentially what happened, April, August, December of last year of nineteen, they paid somehow or other skipped April. They paid the August bill, okay? They did not pay the April bill and they did not pay, um, the December bill. When they came in to pay the December bill, um, they questioned it how much higher their bond was, because it was fifteen seventy-one thirty-nine instead of seventy-one seventy-nine. Had not questioned it, paid it in August, did not pay it in April. The bond was lower in April, so it wasn't as high of penalty, but it had changed. But so that's where it's, that's a little confusing because they off paid, they missed one month, they paid one and then the other. And they never noticed it.
So at this point, the recommendation from Denise is to refund the one thousand five hundred seventeen eighty-eight and apply that as a credit, um, to, they've, they've paid the most recent?
Uh, no, it is due. They owe the April bill and then they owe the
And after we apply all of the credit, they'll still have the fifteen hundred seventeen remaining, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So that is the recommendation, uh, from the office. Any thoughts, questions, comments on that?
I mean, do we, I mean, we, we have no recourse. I mean, they proved that they had the meter in and that's what they got fined for, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
So
My, that's my recommendation is to do that. So if that, what's that?
Why wouldn't the meter run properly?
What's that?
Why wouldn't the meter re, I think, didn't we discuss this a couple of months ago?
It was installed, but they're supposed to contact the village to say that they had it installed and they hadn't.
The plump supposedly, the plumber was supposed to have contacted and no one's in contact, so
So then it became, um, a matter of they were paying the bill and then they realized, hey, we, we installed the water meter, why is it still on the bill? And they came and talked to us and that's how we got to where we are now. There are some things that we couldn't refund because it was past the time, but this one, uh, we could.
And we're all good that that's the actual number that we owe them?
Yep.
Yes. If that is good, I'm looking for a motion to, uh, approve the refund. Emily and Bobby, any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm still looking for that, um, uh, Saluso stuff from my previous notes of meetings. I gotta find which meeting it originated from, so
Um, it originated back in either June or July.
I want to say July.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say July.
Looking, um, do you have the sandbar?
I do.
Okay, so
If, if I could just raise
Yeah, please, and
On what you just approved, one thing I think for the board to consider is it sounds like there was a fair amount of village administrative time to figure this out. And it was the property owner's failure to notify the village of the meter installation. One thing for the board might want to consider is taking a look at the village's local law on the meter installation and address that situation where the property owner fails to notify the meter was installed. There should be some penalty because there is administrative time incurred. Sounds like Denise took a fair amount of time to figure this out. And that's not accounted for.
Right.
Probably should be accounted for in your local law.
And if it's, to me, it's not the plumber's responsibility who installs the meter.
Well, it's the property owner or the plumber, but the, you know, the owner said the plumber was supposed to call, yeah.
Think about it. If you want to have that change paid, we can propose that, but
That's something that can be adjusted to the local law that we have existing.
We can propose amendments to the local law to address the situation where the meter installation wasn't noticed and it's just village administrative time incurred as a result of this.
Yeah, there was quite a bit of Quite a bit of time there.
And that's something that would not factor in right now, but we'd have to work it into our rules for later. Let's keep moving. Let's talk sandbar. I'll kind of keep looking, uh, as we go through this.
Did you do youth center when I was missing?
We tabled that. Uh, here's the, um
Yeah, so
That's gotta be it, um, if we have it in a previous, let's keep looking.
All right, we went through the, um, letter and request from the sandbar that, um, the mayor read last meeting. Um, we tabled it. We wanted to pull out the water bills, um, and compare from twenty eighteen, same timeframe to twenty nineteen where all of this occurred. And there was a difference, um, between those bills, like pretty, about three hundred and twenty dollars difference.
Is this the, uh, these are the two?
Yes.
So, yeah, we looked, um, at the, the, the same time from the previous year. The one they noted was high, it was nine hundred nineteen ninety-two. In terms of usage, the usage was sixty-four thousand, a little over sixty-four thousand. The same period from, from a year prior, the usage was only thirty-eight thousand.
Twenty-six thousand more gallons.
Yeah, and the difference was, um, a little over three hundred dollars in, uh, usage. Although the rate was slightly different, but we could still figure that out. So we had talked to Neil and Neil and Kenny both confirmed, yes, that the issues that they had were legitimate and yes, they were related to the sewer projects. The one thing we had wanted to was to do a little more historical dive to do the comparison and, and note the difference. Um, and the idea being, uh, this would be a refund in a sense to solve a potential claim if there would be one. So the numbers, so here are the numbers if you want to compare the two. Um, and it would be our decision, uh, if we want to offer, uh, a refund of, of some form.
So is this nine seven five?
Those were penalties that were being incurred.
Oh, yeah, ignore that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So here's the usage number. That's the total.
This is the total, I guess.
Correct.
Three hundred and twenty dollars.
So it, it, we could, uh, very simply come up with a number, say two hundred, two hundred fifty. We could do the three hundred, three hundred twelve if you want to do that. Uh, it's up to, uh, to you guys what you want to do. If you're not sure, just think to yourself, what would Craig say?
We're missing Craig today.
We're missing Craig.
The voice of reason.
The voice of reason. Any thoughts?
Creditor for three hundred?
How does it sound to you guys?
Yeah, I don't think we have any
I mean, it's not her fault.
Okay.
But, yeah, I
Ben, Kevin?
I'm good with that. Yes.
Do you want to make that motion then?
Motion.
Second.
So that'll be to credit three hundred dollars?
What you said, yeah.
All right. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so I did go back through my notes and found, uh, that the expense was seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and eighty-four uh, for the, um, the water heater bill. Seven hundred fifty-seven dollars eighty-four cents. Again, the, the, the general message was the water heater wasn't brand new, but it definitely had some, some life left in it. So it would be our decision if we want to prorate some of that, uh, and refund that back to, um, uh, the owner.
I think the only fair way is to be prorated. I mean, I don't think you want to, you can't, you can't give them the value of a brand new hot water heater. Wouldn't, I don't feel.
When you
Except for the whole plumbing?
That's the, the heater, the, that's the installation and the, and the, uh
Yep.
Hot water heater itself.
Of the new one?
Yes.
When you spoke to that person about
The plumber?
About how much life was locked in that?
Yeah, like, like you said, you, you can't quantify. He said, I can't tell you how much life. He said, it was in good shape except for it busted the seam. And he said, it definitely, he felt there was an influx in a pressure was caused to burst. That was his opinion.
How do we, how do we quantify a number then?
We just, in a sense, decide, I mean, you could go
We know how
We could go
We don't know the age.
Yeah, no, but the person, the person whose house it is, is, is deceased since the time it happened. She passed away. So this is her daughter is who is
I mean, you could very easily, two hundred fifty would be a third?
Takeoff.
To, to, to credit back to them? If you wanted to start with a number, you could start with, say, two fifty and decide, do you guys want to go higher or lower? Is that, is that good?
Here's one suggestion. This is in the nature of a claim by the property owner back to the board.
Yeah.
You certainly have the ability to compromise claims. What you don't want to do is have an additional dispute with, with the owner. Since this is a situation where you've now gathered more information, you have a little bit more evidence within view and the board, if the board is inclined to compromise this claim, it, it may be advantageous to speak with the daughter, with the property owner about a number where the board, um, would like to resolve this and, and
That's, that's okay to do that, like as far as come to a number?
It's probably a lot easier, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a claim against the board and any, if this were litigated, that those negotiations, with all due respect to the doctor that spoke,
Are you sure you should be?
It'd be appropriate, that's right.
If you did say that.
To negotiate it and, and talk to the owner and, and, and come to a number that, that's a reasonable
Can, can we
Reasonable compromise.
Can we, Andy, authorize Rob to come to a number with the homeowner?
You can authorize a settlement or at least authority up to a certain
Certain, rather than having to go back and prove for next month?
Okay.
And we could vote on that tonight.
You can vote on authorizing the mayor to speak with and have the authority to settle the claim up to.
All right, I like that.
I would do up to half.
That would be, um
Three seventy something?
Up to three
Say four hundred.
Up to four hundred?
Well, before we do that.
See, gives us a See, he gives us ideas and then he.
I wanna hear him all.
It's gonna be in the press.
It's a press, it's a public meeting, it's accessible, yeah.
I'm gonna say four hundred.
Yeah.
If you put four hundred on it, because I know that's your limit.
Don't put it in the press.
I I think given.
Well, I mean, that's.
It would be advisable to go to the property owner, just have discussions.
Okay.
And have to bring that back to the board, catch your.
That makes sense.
As long as we're gonna get money back, they're gonna be, I mean, they'd be happy, right, at this point, they've got zero, so.
Cause you guys probably have a lot of different ideas and you can tell me about the ideas later, that's that's no problem and I'll bring it back.
You can take, tell me about the ideas offline.
Bobby had a motion and tabled, anybody second that?
Yeah, Emily, Ben and Emily.
Give me my last one.
Emily. Uh all in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
Aye. Uh opposed? Alright, great, tabled. Um you got.
We're really hoping to pass these tonight.
Seriously. Alright, uh Huzick Falls landfill, we have a resolution. Approving an agreement with Honeywell International Incorporated regarding the village landfill remedial investigation and feasibility study. As a reminder, last meeting, um the board gave me authority to execute an agreement with the state. Uh and Honeywell and the village uh on an order of consent with the village and that was subject to an approval of an agreement with Honeywell. Uh to cover um the costs. And I would read this uh parts of this to you, are there any particular spots, Andy, you want me to read or anything you wanna summarize?
Negotiation involved in that?
No comment.
With a lawyer? No comment. Oh dear.
Just in in brief summary.
Yeah.
The the mayor did say that at your last meeting, he reviewed the proposed consent order with the departments. That would require that a remedial investigation feasibility study be done on the village landfill. Subject to reaching an agreement with Honeywell and how that would be done. Uh the two PRPs identified by the department or at least willing to enter into a consent order with the department and with Honeywell and the village. And again, the village is here because they're owner operator and Honeywell is here because of the general. And so there have been discussions with Honeywell, what's in front of you now for consideration to approve and authorize the mayor to execute is. An agreement where Honeywell will initially fund the full cost of the remedial investigation feasibility study. Consent orders will be signed both by Honeywell and the village. Uh the parties have agreed to try to resolve issues associated with the final allocation. Of that remedial investigation feasibility cost. The department is also looking for recovery of past costs. Uh that is gonna be the subject of discussions with Honeywell. Obviously, the position is Honeywell has the vast majority of the responsibility here. Particularly in light of the fact that the landfill was closed previously under a D E C order. And those closure costs were in the village, so they are. In the nature of remedial costs already that incurred by the village. And it should be noted that the village is working with the village insurer on this issue as well. And those discussions will continue in the effort to try to keep village responsibility at a minimum. This will allow the remedial investigation feasibility study to move forward. That Honeywell initially pay for that to continue to to negotiate with with the company and the village carrier on final allocation.
Yeah.
Sorry, I know Dave Engel would recommend that the board approve the agreement.
Yes, and um.
Based on his, and you read.
Yes, and he's he's spoken and.
Based on the questions that were brought up and the response from. From Dave that certainly putting in a uh shed a different light on it, to maybe it made it more understandable.
Yeah.
Does it change the classification of the site?
Uh it doesn't. Ultimately, following the R I F S, there will be a remedial option. Identified, and once the remediation starts, there's a potential to reclassify the site, but not at this point.
And um I I do wanna say, uh Dave has been on this, going back and forth and back and forth quite a bit. Uh he's done great work on this and getting the insurance file is great, as has Andy, who has been in the loop on all of this.
Much to add.
Even though he doesn't know how to negotiate, uh it's been very helpful to have someone who understands the the law and stuff on this, so. Uh the agreement, by the way, is up on the website, if you wanna have a copy of it, um you can print out as many as you want and fly in whatever rooms you want.
That agreement, why I want to click on it?
I I fixed that link at lunch. Uh I I set it up this morning, uh and and checked it.
Drive you crazy.
Uh I checked it.
You did that just for me?
Just for you, Kevin.
I had one question, but it was like at midnight.
I'm really sorry about that because I was really angry about it. When I got to school and couldn't view the link. It was, it was one space in the code was enough to to. I'm messing with you, Kevin.
That's what he said, it's he was fixed, I'm gonna do this for Kevin.
Alright, so resolution, um authorizing execution of the agreement with Honeywell International Incorporated by the mayor of Huzick Falls. Um do you want me to just go to the now therefore be it resolved, now therefore be it resolved by the board of trustees, the village of Huzick Falls in regular session duly convened as follows. One, the board of trustees of the village of Huzick Falls hereby approves the execution of the proposed agreement between the village and Honeywell. In the form attached here too is exhibit A regarding the village of Huzick Falls municipal landfill. And further, hereby authorizes the mayor to execute such proposed agreement between the village and Honeywell on behalf of the village of Huzick Falls. Looking for someone to introduce the resolution?
Motion.
Thank you, Emily, and second from Bobby. Did you wanna say anything else about the agreement? You ca- characterized it pretty well.
Parties do reserve all of their rights, realize the village is not giving up any claims or defenses in the event that ultimately is a dispute with Honeywell. Uh on appropriate allocation fees costs. But I think all parties are looking in good faith to try to get this addressed to the law.
I'm not a lawyer, if I was able to interpret that out of that. And I'm not a doctor either.
Not, yeah, you got time, go get that degree. Alright, any further discussion? If not, we uh roll call vote, please.
Okay, trustee Pine absent, trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis is absent, trustee Marpy?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And deputy mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Therefore adopt this, uh March tenth, twenty twenty, thank you.
It was March tenth, right? Okay. Uh it is, it is a big deal, it's it's.
Yeah.
As I keep saying, it is the most unsexy thing to have to be followed, but it's been one of the biggest things we've been working on over the past year. Yeah, absolutely, um and and it not only is it great to not have to worry about that, but to have the insurance being ready to help pick up that.
Right, that's huge.
It's huge, so.
Great.
Yeah. But again, who needs the legal minds, you know? Alright, moving on, moving on. Sorry, I apologize, alright. Um budget modifications, you guys received a couple of budget modifications. Um looking for motion to approve the budget modifications for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. This was all based on an error in the formulation for budget salaries for mayor and the board of trustees.
Motion.
Thank you, Ben, thank you, Kevin, any further question or discussion on this?
No, and he's made it very clear.
Yep.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, thank you. Resolution uh for adoption of the two thousand nineteen uh village of Huzick Falls local waterfront revitalization strategy and comprehensive plan. Uh there's a whole bunch of whereas clauses, now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Huzick Falls hereby adopts the two thousand nineteen. Local waterfront revitalization strategy and comprehensive plan. Looking for someone to offer the resolution? I guess that was Bobby.
Second.
Second, Emily. Um and again, this is, yeah.
I know I'm getting off the same track here, but does that comprehensive plan have any sanitation in it at all?
I don't think it.
Cause I went to several.
No, you know?
I don't remember seeing it.
I went to several meetings and I, cause I'm a broken record and I said, so you're gonna have this great waterfront? Where are people gonna go? Oh, well, we'll put that in later.
I wanna say that there is some.
I feel like there were a couple of things for pets. And I think that in some of the individual locations, there may have been. I know that this is, this is not like this, all this is going to happen, but this is the strategy we're going to. Um and I I I think your point is well made that that has to be part of the equation, otherwise we're gonna be cleaning up our own stuff anyway, so. I guess we'll do it the right way.
You know, so.
Yep, we will check, we will check.
Thank you.
Yep, alright, uh so we have it uh offered and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Okay, mayor Allen?
Oh, sorry, yes, I was like, who's that?
Mayor Patton, no.
Apparently it's late.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Marpy? Trustee Lewis is absent, trup- trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Pine is absent. Okay, we are adopted on March ten, thank you. You sure you don't wanna be mayor?
No. Not till next year. I'm sorry, did that slip out?
Sorry, who said something, what's that? I didn't hear anything. That's fine, that's fine, oh that was, that was one of my favorite moments, alright. Um so we have drafted up a a local law number one that we'd like to introduce tonight, this is a local law.
You gotta go to the phones first.
Oh geez, I skipped the phone system, alright, you guys have a packet for the phone system?
The cheap one.
Yeah, sorry. Kevin, take a look, I know, just, I know, just just FYI, yeah. Um okay, so we have three systems we looked into to get quotes for the voice over I P, the VoIP system. Um that's Browns and Troy. Yeah, just just FYI. The the three s- the three companies were Broadsmart, Nextiva and uh Call One. And I have this packet for you guys.
Yeah, everybody has one.
Do you guys all have your phone system packet?
Yeah.
Okay, this is the email from Jackie who's been helping us, the first bracketed paragraph. She says Broadsmart is offering a hosted and also managed VoIP service. Alright, uh and onsite technician for install. This does mean there's an upfront cost, they are also a purchase service on the actual headsets. Which come with warranty coverage, they're offering the free month of calling service, so if we went through Broadsmart, we would pay for installation. We would pay for the actual phones and then the monthly service. Nextiva is offering free standard model phones. And the auto attendants do not have a charge, what that means is when you call the number and you have your initial list of like, you want to speak to the village office or the police. Or the court, press one, two, or three, that's the first level. Broadsmart, the first one, if you go further levels after that, you have, you're charged an extra fee to do that. Nextiva does not do that, you can have as many layers in the the categories as you want. With the customer, your size, cause Nextiva has different sets for customers, you have like fifty seats or fifty locations where phones are. Um Nextiva does not dispatch a tech onsite to do the install, but does provide remote support for phone installs. The network switches are to be purchased on your own, separate from Nextiva, which is the same thing we would do with Broadsmart. Um she's recommended that, she's worked with both of them, they're reliable, um they both can also be easily changed and updated as need throughout the contract, so. Contract number one, Broadsmart. And by the way, all these contracts are three-year contracts, where at the end of three years, you kinda renegotiate again.
All the same?
They're all the same length. Um you'll notice that Broadsmart comes out to monthly two hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Plus a one-time charge of one thousand five hundred dollars. The installations, four hundred and twenty-five, and the phones are a little over a thousand dollars. And when I say phones, we have um I think ten total phone locations. That's three in the police department, one in the court, one in the courtroom, and then one uh code enforcement treasurer, clerk, uh deputy clerk and mayor. All those phone locations. Um so that's sort of our our ten, plus we have fax lines. Uh there'd be three fax lines, one for the village offices, one for the police department, one for the court, each on their own account, so we know, we can't see theirs and they can't see ours and all that stuff. So that's the Broadsmart, um when we uh went through, Marie and I, and listened to each of the three companies sort of make their pitch, we liked both Broadsmart and Nextiva. We had no interest in Call One, cause it was too expensive. They all seemed like good options. Yeah, yeah, I'll, yeah, the Nextiva quote, um they offered us a slew of discounts, which is really nice. Um the installation, um they basically have it as as a as a promo, so they 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 have a charge and then they have a reduction. So that cancels out to nothing, again, the free phones is a big deal because we don't need anything more than a basic phone, that's a huge deal. So the monthly cost for Nextiva is two hundred and fourteen dollars. Now, this doesn't include the onsite installation, but on the next sheet, Jackie did say that her group can come out and install. For two hours for two hundred dollars to to be there for the installation. Uh so, and when I, when I told that that um Denise that our total would be this two hundred and fourteen dollars plus the, you know, sixty or seventy we're doing for the internet. Brings it to like three hundred dollars a month, she almost fell off her chair, cause we're paying well over a thousand for all of the phone lines and fax lines we have here. Yeah, so this is a huge, huge deal.
Yeah.
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 Yep, there you go, so um. My um my recommendation is the Nextiva, um you're good with that, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, so we're recommending Nextiva, you made the motion?
I'll second.
Second, thank you, Ben, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, we'll get right on that, and Bob Ash is gonna be so happy.
Yes, he is.
Yes, he won't rescue tonight.
Oh, thank you, thank you, that's right, good. Um yeah, that's gonna be huge, uh and also, one of the cool things is we're including a cordless phone. Um so Marie's gonna have two phones, and if she needs to pick up the cordless and walk around, she'll be able to do that, which they can't do right now.
Good, so you can't get away at all.
Don't let Denise take it outside when she's smoking.
Right now, it's hold and please God, I hope the hold system works. Alright, uh introducing local law number one, uh this is a local law adopting the twenty twenty New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. And New York State Energy Conservation Construction Code. The town of Huzick is also doing this, uh and introduced it in their meeting yesterday. Um so thanks to that that town supervisor guy over there for bringing this up.
Sorry.
Do you wanna say anything on on code enforcement? Okay, that's cool, but as code enforcement officer, do you wanna quickly summarize this?
We don't, we don't have a choice, the state's going back to um the New York State codes. When I first started, we were, it was New York State codes and influx into the international codes. Now they're going back to the New York State code.
Thank you.
So really, I mean, we're in New York State, we we have to use New York State code. I I guess we probably could stay with the international code, it doesn't make any sense though, I don't think, I don't think the state would let us really, but.
You had me, we have to do this.
Yeah, as I'm thinking about going back and forth, I really think in the end, we have to do it.
If we're gonna fight the state, it's not gonna be on this.
Well, that's where your support is, I mean, that's where you have to call.
Yeah. Um so as as standard, we have to set a public hearing, um do we need a motion to introduce the local law?
Someone just introduces the law, then the board will set a public hearing date.
Okay, so in that case, um we need to set a public hearing date, uh it would make sense for our next meeting.
Fourteenth.
Uh April fourteenth, it's gonna be a big meeting, is that our reorganization meeting too? And budget meeting? Oh, good, it's on break too.
Someone brings snacks.
April fourteenth meeting.
I'm trying to China that day, I'm probably gonna miss that one, Rob.
Oh, are you? Are you?
Yeah, I'll forewarn you, I mean, they're probably gonna line up the bike jam this whole code.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure, they'll be beating this down. So.
Our public hearing fifteen minutes for them.
Yeah.
I don't expect it to be much more.
So we can start it at a five forty-five time if we wanted to do that.
That's fine.
Is that, so looking for motion to set the public hearing on local law number one for April fourteenth, five forty-five, you cut me off, Ben, how dare you? Uh motion by Ben, second by Bobby, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, alright. We have a resolution outlining standard workday and reporting for elected officials.
We had it last one, we had a few things missing that this.
So we have to present it again and run it again.
Present it again and just.
So, this will both, we don't have to like reneg the other one, we just present this one. Okay.
About this one, I would, my suggestion would be that it be characterized in the nature of an amended resolution.
Amended.
Yeah, we can date it tonight.
Okay.
Alright, so this is not exactly the standard format for um. I read it would be resolved that the village of Huzick Falls, location forty-one nine five hereby establishes. The following standard workdays for all the titles subsequent here, and will report the of uh officials to the New York State and local retirement based on their records of activities. So we need someone to, do we need someone to offer it?
Uh no, we don't, we just need to have a motion to accept it.
Do you wanna take a look at this, Andy?
Um, I'm, yeah, I'm the only one that would sign it.
Take a look at the top.
I'll make the motion, just.
Kevin made one.
You can second.
Okay, so, motion from Emily and second by.
Kevin, Kevin already made it.
Oh, Kevin already made it, sorry.
Emily's out.
I didn't hear you.
Do you wanna second it, do you wanna second it?
She's a second.
All right, um, do you need roll call or just all, um, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, great, uh, review of bid received from the new highway garage, uh, generator, if you go back to your reports, Neil did mention this. In the end of his highway, uh, department's, uh, report. Last par- no, 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 not quite, uh, Neil, is there anything you wanna summarize, decide what you already said on this paper? Beautiful, his recommendation is to go with Bradley, it came in at thirty-nine thousand around with installation, um, there's a state bid of thirty-one thousand, but that does not include installation. Uh, the installation would be, uh, extra, it would be roughly the same, possibly more, so the recommendation is to go with the guy who offered both the, um, the 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 cost and the installation. Um, and it's the local guy who we've used before, who, um, has done all the other work at the highway garage anyway, so that's recommendation.
Motion to approve Bradley at thirty-nine thousand.
Second.
Second, oh.
Thank you, Bobby, any further discussion, Neil, all good? We got, we got the nod, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, thank you.
Neil, how, uh, does he have the generator or?
Uh, he's thinking, I'll order.
What's that?
What's the, uh?
I have to order it.
I will let him know tomorrow morning and he'll get a lead time on it.
Okay.
All right.
What size is it? A. A K W with the generator, who's getting those through, same thing with the generator.
So, trustees, um, not bad, you can tune out on this one, man.
Did you hear how he asked that?
Uh, Brian had started to work with Andy on negotiating, renegotiating the charter communications franchise agreement. Um, Emily, do you wanna quickly summarize the importance of this or just say it's a really important thing, it would be helpful to have someone do it?
Very important and there's a coverage and also payments to the.
We have a lot of notes here, uh, from Brian and Andy regarding this, what I'm looking for is a trustee who would like to take on this discussion, work with Andy. Um, and stick it to charter, I mean to negotiate with charter on behalf of the village. Would anyone like to jump at that now or?
I nominate Craig Pine.
I second Craig.
There you are.
Somehow or other, we outknew that.
That's what happens when you.
Um.
You have a motion to second.
You're not here.
Do we do all in favor?
Uh, I I'm, I'm not gonna do all in favor, do I, do I have to do all in favor legally speaking?
I'll do, I'll step in, I'll step in as stepping mayor, all in favor?
Uh, okay, I guess all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll send him a task, congratulations.
I I'm gonna abstain because, uh, I I like Craig and don't want him hurting me.
Who made the motion, who made the initial motion and all that commotion?
Who made that motion?
I did.
Okay.
Of course, and I second it, Bobby?
By the time he figures it out, I'll be.
All right, yeah, hold on to that, I will speak with Craig, um. See if he, uh, still will will speak to me after that, thanks guys for that, appreciate it.
If he really, if he doesn't wanna do it, I'll be.
Before I accept, before I accept the motion to adjourn, I do want to, uh, thank, uh, trustee Ben Patton for his many years of service to the village. Um, as he had discussed previously, um, um, for some, for some very different, uh, good personal reasons. Uh, it is his time to step down from the board. Um, Ben has been a trustee as long as I have been here, which is not long, how long have you been?
Seven years.
Seven years.
I was appointed in thirteen.
Oh, that's, okay, um, trying to find, cause Denise had a couple of nice things, um.
You gotta look for it.
Yeah. It's an email.
Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no. Um, it is, it has been absolutely great to work with Ben. Um, and I I know he hates this sort of self-praise, which is why I'm gonna drag it out and go to executive session to go even further with this, um.
And I am not reading this off of the.
Um, Denise wanted to pass on, uh, that Ben has been a very dedicated trustee. He's been a huge help and a pleasure to have as a trustee, and she'll say otherwise if it's not true. Um, uh, and and having you over the financial, the finance departments, uh, you've been very involved in cable TV, uh, or SWMA. Um, and it's all run very smoothly, uh, with your great personality and mannerisms. And he, uh, he, she says that you you would be missed by the office and the rest of the village and residents, and best wishes. Um, I love, uh, the fact that you are willing to say what you need to say, no matter who it's to. Because your interests have always been, uh, for what is the best thing for the village. And I know that when I came on, um, and, um, dove into everything and passed on information. Uh, you were just, I was taken aback by how firmly committed you were to trying to get things right and I've always appreciated that, so, thank you very much, Ben.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Um, I would just like to say that, um, you know, when I started in two thousand thirteen and.
Had no idea what you were signing up for.
Well, it's funny, because I I had actually, I had actually been on the board previously, lost an election and then was appointed. Because I thought that, you know, I I had something to offer, um, but what I found out in the last seven years is how dedicated the board is. To, to the village, I always thought that way when I got back on. That it wasn't, it wasn't party, it wasn't anything, it was just six people or seven people doing what's right for the village. I still feel that way today, which is, you know, makes it hard to step down, um, and not run again, but again, like the mayor said. Um, I have job things that are just gonna make it difficult to to make it to the meetings and, um, I really think you have to be a hundred percent if you're gonna, if you're gonna do it, so. But I like the way the board is set up now, again, everyone is doing what's they believe is the best for the village. And anybody that doesn't feel that way, that comes to these meetings and thinks that we're not, then they need to run. And sit there and and go through this, because you can, you can say what you want while you're sitting in the chair. But until you're up here a- and you can really feel that awesome responsibility, that what you're doing is really in the best interest of the entire village. That's what really makes it all worthwhile, that's why I got back in and, you know, it would have been really easy. To get out after fourteen and just not run in sixteen. And it really would have been easy to just kinda get off in eighteen. But, but I, but I will say, the changes that we made between thirteen and now have been so good. In 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 the construction of the board, in the addition of Andy and Dave, um. It's just, it's nice, it's nice to have the cohesiveness of all of us together, the 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 staff, the the people that work for the village, everybody that that does it. They certainly don't do it for the money, so they have to do it for the love of the village and that's what I really am glad that I can feel that I left it better than when I started, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ben, I'm gonna miss you, but I'm gonna miss your candy even more.
Ben, it's been a pleasure, you know, it's, we've been around, gone around a few times together, so, no, you definitely will be missed, not just for the candy.
Gonna miss you, Ben.
Thank you.
Well, Ben?
Motion to adjourn.
You're second.
Second.
Emily, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, all in favor, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned.
Craig is pretty good about candy too, though, he is pretty good about.